Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, August 5th, meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. Take a roll call, call order? Introduce yourself.
Oh, Maria Padron, sorry.
It's your first, I know, your first one here.
Mark Nolte.
Mark Sines.
Billy Townsend.
Very good. Jump to item number three on the agenda, public discussion of any item not on the agenda this evening. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to the commission on any item not on the agenda, now is your time to make yourself known. I'm not seeing anyone. We will move on to item number four, a consideration of zoning code amendment REZ 21-0007 to allow self-storage uses in community commercial CC2 zones by special exception. Anne, I take it you're it?
Good evening. Vice Chair and members of the commission, Anne Russett with Neighborhood and Development Services. This is a proposed text amendment that was presented to staff by Southgate Companies to allow self-service storage uses in the community commercial CC2 zones. Southgate is specifically looking for this use at 947 Highway 6 East, which is formerly Slumberland, to allow for an indoor self-service storage use and small retail uses in the front of the building. Currently, in our current code, self-service storage uses are only allowed in CI1 zones, general industrial zones, and heavy industrial zones. They are not allowed in CC2 zones. However, due to the changing retail landscape and structure of the proposed project, staff supports a text amendment, and the proposed amendment would be allowed by special exception. So again, the proposed amendment is to allow self-storage uses in all CC2 zones throughout the city through the special exception process, and as a special exception, the Board of Adjustment would need to approve the use. In order to be approved, the proposed project would need to meet both general approval criteria and specific approval criteria. As part of this amendment, staff has developed specific approval criteria that's related to maintaining a variety of goods and services in the CC2 zone to ensure high-quality, active building facades, and to minimize any potential negative visual impacts. There we go. The general approval criteria is not changing through this proposed text amendment. This is the approval criteria that's required of all special exceptions. It includes that the use would not be detrimental or endanger public health, safety, or welfare, that it would not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, it would not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property, that there's adequate utilities, access, drainage, that adequate measures have been taken to provide ingress or egress, to minimize traffic congestion, and that it would meet the requirements of the code. And lastly, that there is consistency with the comprehensive plan. Through the proposed amendment, staff is proposing for specific approval criteria. The first is that self-storage units shall be completely within a conditioned space, and that no outdoor storage would be allowed, that the self-service storage units would not individually be accessed from the outside, and that no more than two garages or overhead doors could be provided, and that they must be at the rear of the building. The third criteria is that a substantial proportion of the front building facade must accommodate other allowable commercial uses, and the self-service storage use must not be allowed within the first 30 feet of the front building depth. However, the primary entrance to the self-storage area could be located there, but it could not exceed 30% of the building width. And then lastly, the building must meet the site development standards for large retail Sorry, I'm having an issue with my computer, so bear with me here. There we go. I just wanted to go through those site development standards that are currently in our code for large retail uses that would be applied to future self-service storage uses in CC2. A lot of them are design-related standards, so public-facing facades, exterior walls would have to have projections and some articulation, projections and recesses every 100 feet, that there has to be visual interest along 60% of the facade, so that includes entry areas, awnings, or windows, and at least three of the following must exist, so there must be a change in color, texture, or material, or plane. In terms of roof details, if it's a flat roof, the building must incorporate parapets to conceal rooftop equipment. Building materials must be high-quality, that includes brick masonry stucco for at least 75% of the walls, and that smooth-faced, unadorned surfaces cannot exceed 25% of the walls. Entryways also must be prominent, so people walking to those buildings know where the entry is and know where they can get in. They must be clearly defined. If there are multiple stores in one building, each store requires at least one exterior customer entrance, and these entrances must include a feature that helps define that entrance, such as an overhang, an arcade, or a projection. So staff completed an analysis as part of this text amendment, and we realized that the retail landscape has changed in the recent years. There's many large, national, brick-and-mortar retailers that are closing, e-commerce is expanding, businesses are being forced to adapt, and these trends can negatively impact the demand for large retail spaces, resulting in vacant big-box stores, which can lead to deferred maintenance and depressed property values. Finding an alternative uses for these spaces is beneficial, especially if it's paired with opportunities to support other small businesses. This is a map of the city that shows the property within the city that is currently zoned CC2, so although we have been talking about Southgate's project, with this code amendment, self-storage uses would be allowed through special exception in all of these areas. Just to show a few of those locations up close, you can see Walden Square out on the west side, the Highway 1, 218 interchange is CC2, to the Towncrest area is CC2, as is Old Town Village out on Scott Boulevard. And then there's also some areas in the center of our town and riverfront crossings that are CC2. We've mentioned Pepperwood Plaza, there's the Sycamore Mall, or Iowa City Marketplace that's also CC2. So these are some of the areas that could, where self-storage uses would be allowed, and some of these areas may be appropriate for self-storage uses, and others may not be as appropriate for self-storage uses. So the amendment really relies on the general and specific criteria. The specific criteria focuses on encouraging an active pedestrian-friendly facade, and requiring accommodation of other commercial uses, and the general criteria ensures that it's a good fit by considering impacts on surrounding properties, and also making sure it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, district plan, or even the plan for the Towncrest area, riverfront crossings. Southgate's proposed reuse of the Slumberland site proposes small retail storefronts along the front facade. It is also possible for new self-storage uses to be developed along in new commercial areas. So this is the concept for Pepperwood Plaza and the former Slumberland space that Southgate provided to staff. We also looked at other nearby cities and how they regulate self-storage uses. We looked at Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, and Davenport, and they allow self-storage uses in a wider variety of zones. Some distinguish between indoor and outdoor, and indoor self-storage uses are generally allowed in more zones, and a lot of these cities also have use-specific criteria similar to what staff is proposing to ensure that these uses fit into their community and some of the design requirements that their community envisions. In terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan, it supports several goals, including increasing and diversifying the property tax base by encouraging the retention and expansion of existing businesses, encouraging a healthy mix of independent and locally-owned businesses, it promotes economic activity and supports an active and attractive front facade, and with a high, unmet demand for Class A storage, the use can drive traffic to the site and conserve nearby residences. Lastly, the 2020-2021 strategic plan includes a goal to promote an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city, and the city is seeking to invigorate neighborhood commercial districts and create new neighborhood commercial zones, and allowing more flexible uses that can increase the resiliency of existing commercial areas. We received...
Sorry, can you go back to the slide? Can you read again how it promotes the comprehensive plan? Because I cannot read, and I didn't understand the first point that you were saying.
So one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to increase and diversify the property tax base by encouraging the retention and expansion of existing businesses. And another goal is to encourage a healthy mix of locally-owned businesses and national businesses, and as part of this amendment, the specific criteria would require additional uses besides the self-storage use, because the front of the facade cannot be used for that self-storage use. We did receive one piece of correspondence regarding this text amendment, which was received today by staff. I printed out copies for the commission to take a look at. There were some concerns expressed relating to concentration of self-storage uses in this area, the size of the commercial spaces along the facade, and a concern that the use would discourage investment in the area, and you can read the full comments in the email. In terms of next steps, after Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, staff would set up, ask the city council to set a public hearing in order to consider the proposed text amendment. Staff recommends that the zoning code be amended to allow self-storage uses in the community commercial CC2 zone by special exception, subject to the specific approval criteria outlined in your agenda packet. And that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back to the vice chair.
Thank you, Anne. Do any members of the commission have any questions for staff?
Do we have a kind of a layout, how it might look, just how the building might be broken out? I'm just curious how big these retail spaces might be. I saw the outside picture, but...
The applicant is here, and I think they're going to speak to that in more detail, but I think the proposed spaces are between 800 and 1,500 square feet.
Okay.
Since these are enclosed storage units, will there be regulations on what cannot be stored in those units?
The city does have regulations related to the storage of flammable equipment that wouldn't be allowed in this area.
Okay, but that's it, that's...
Quality Care has like a list of what you can and can't put in. We've used their spaces, so they're pretty diligent about...
Those are mostly outdoor spaces, so these are going to be inside, and there'll be other retail establishments there, and I guess anything with fumes could be a problem. Just a concern.
We can ask the applicant if we want to. Any other questions for staff?
I'd move approval.
Well, if not, well, first we'll open the public hearing.
Sorry, we do that first.
That's okay.
No, we had to do that to open the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, and invite the applicant or applicant's representative to take the podium and share with us anything you'd like to share.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Caleb Wilson with Southgate Companies, and let you introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. My name is Brian with Braintree Storage out of Cedar Rapids.
So we've been working with Brian on this project. He, obviously, at Southgate, we have a long track record of development in this community in a variety of ways, self-storage specifically, we haven't worked on in the past, and that's Brian's expertise, and so he's brought a lot of really helpful knowledge to us, so he'll be answering most of the questions specific to self-storage, and I'll be talking more about this process and kind of how we got here, and what we plan to deliver as a product through this, and why we're requesting this amendment in the first place. So this shopping center was developed by Southgate a long time ago. Obviously, retail has changed dramatically, as Anne shared in their research supports over the years, and this building has been occupied by Slumberland for quite some time as a retail space. We owned the L-shaped building beside it for a long time as well, which was sold to Parkview Church, and now has been repurposed for other uses within the community, a lot of it being focused on the church. So Slumberland, we were notified in the fall of last year that they would be moving out of that building to Corvill. At that point, we reached out to the city, we shared with them that they were going to be leaving, and that we were going to be looking for a new user for that space. This building is roughly 38,000 square feet, so it is a large space, there's no walls dividing it up within it, so it is a large shell space. It's also a very deep space, that you just don't really see these being built very much anymore unless they're a very specific company, a specific user. This was originally built for Econo Foods back in, I think, the 1980s. So the city referred us to their retail consultant, a company called Retail Consultants out of Texas, I believe, and they helped us assess what could be a good future use of this building. So we worked with them for months on that, and they basically went to all their tenants who they had been having conversations with, potential users, they had a lot, they had some leads from their work with the Iowa City Marketplace, and they basically presented this space, and we received no real interest from any of that work. So there were really no inquiries that wanted this whole space. So that has led us to continue exploring other paths, as far as how can this building be repurposed for a use as it stands today that will be a long-term viable business for the community, and what are the needs that the community has that can be met by this building? And that's what we sought to find out. So we pursued several different options, one of them continuing to try to find tenants who would fill either the whole space or smaller portions of it. But again, the orientation of the building is not set up in a way that is really desirable to a lot of tenants because of the depth and how far it goes back. So as we continue getting into this, self-storage is something that we became aware of. We've seen other projects like this throughout the country, when old buildings or older buildings like this have been vacated, and they've been redeveloped, and been really successful, and been in high demand to be utilized by the community as a place for storage, and have been helpful. So we started to go down that road of saying, we want to convert this building to self-storage. So we met, we started meeting with community folks at that time, and sharing the idea that we had of doing that, and the community folks that we met with were, it was mostly, I think, the Schmid group that we met with, the Schmid that's been in the works for Pepperwood. The feedback we got was they were really concerned about losing the retail character of this shopping center, so that if the whole building was self-storage, that it would no longer feel like a retail shopping center, and the other businesses around it would struggle. So the idea was, or it would be impacted, I guess, negatively, not necessarily struggle, but the idea was presented to us to look at carving off the front and creating retail spaces to retain that retail character of the shopping center. So that was brought up in this meeting that we had with community members, and we kind of took that and ran with it. So Brian helped us find a design firm who has done projects like this before of converting buildings like this into this kind of a use, and that's who we worked with to come up with these concepts that we share today. So what you see on the front of this building is, we're really trying to take what, you probably all know what it looks like today, I wish I could pull up the side-by-side, but it's not that attractive-looking of a building. So that front space there that is now, what we'd like to purpose as an outdoor patio, is just dead space. It's this odd space that I'm not really sure what it's for. I think it might have been made for like shopping carts back when it was Econo Foods or something, but it's just unused outdoor space, but it's covered. And then the rest of the front of the building is just, you know, one big facade, basically. So what we're looking at doing here is creating smaller retail spaces that are actually in demand, and then creating an outdoor amenity for the rest of, hopefully, the rest of the shopping center, but for sure the businesses that are in this building here, and activating that outdoor space to make it visually attractive, to make it something that folks can use and enjoy this space more. And one of the reasons we are showing some of the businesses on there that we are, are so we model the coffee shop on there, because that's the interest that we've gotten. So Angie Jordan, who's here tonight as well, that's been working with the Schmid and works with the South District Neighborhood Association, she has been sending us a lot of different businesses who are interested in space down in this area. So I've been working with them over the past several months and trying to figure out what are the interested uses that could go into these retail spaces, and we have some good prospects. The size of space that they want is somewhere in between, on average, at least, we talked to them as far as about 800 square feet, maybe up to like 1,500 square feet, is what they're wanting. So they're wanting a small space, they want a permanent location, these are often newer businesses who want to have a permanent physical location, but they can't find space like this that is desirable, that has, you know, an attractive storefront, especially having an outdoor amenity like the patio, and we think we can deliver this to them affordably as well, since we have the rest of this project to help with it. If we can do, if we can use the building for self-storage, which we think is a long-term sustainable use financially, we can probably make it very reasonable for them to be in that fronting space and provide something, again, that's not there. So the demand is there for these smaller spaces, but those are not largely available in the market. So that's been really encouraging to see that use, and one of them specifically that I asked her if I could mention her business specifically, but Evelyn Quesada has a new business called Choco Fresca, which is a coffee and dessert shop, and she's been in the diversity markets and has been really successful in that, and this has a beautiful like food product, I'm sure it's delicious too, I haven't got to try it yet, but, and she is, wants to get in here so bad, and she is very excited about this concept and the idea of that space, and being in this community, being specifically in the South District community is where she wants to be. And we are excited to be able to provide that to her. So, yeah, we've really tried to engage a variety of different folks in the community, understand what the actual needs are, and try to find a good long-term use for this building that is, again, sustainable. I don't want to put something in here that three to five years from now is going to be obsolete because of retail. We're not going back on e-commerce, that's going to continue to expand, retail's going to continue to change in that way, but we're confident that the demand for self-storage is going to be persistent, and is growing in other cities. I think that's a lot of what I wanted to share. Anything else to add, Brian?
Yeah, I don't know that I necessarily have anything to follow up on with Caleb. I did want to speak to the councilwoman's question earlier, that we will have very rigorous requirements over what can and cannot be stored inside there. So, yeah, there's no, nothing with an engine, no flammable materials, anything else like that. But, yeah, I'm kind of just here more for operational questions or anything like that, if the council has any for me.
Do members of the commission have any questions for the developer?
Caleb, how many little spaces would you be able to create on the front there?
So what we have just kind of blocked out right now is just the front, and it's like maybe 4,000 square feet or something like that, but we can really set it up depending on what the demand is. So as we continue moving this forward, if there are, if businesses need a little more size, again, the building's big enough we could accommodate a little bigger use, but I would predict as it is, we can probably have somewhere around three to four, roughly that thousand square foot space up there.
Anyone else? I had a couple of questions, or a couple of comments, I guess. I know, I think a lot of, there's a lot of small retail spaces vacant around the area, but they're not affordable to a new small business, and I feel like that's going to be key to the success of this project, and how are you, how have you approached that? And you feel confident you can offer these at what I would say less than market rate?
So I don't know exactly which spaces you're referring to, I won't try to compare to that, but there's multiple issues that exist in making any new space today, with the biggest one being the cost of construction in general. So what we have going for us in this is, it's an existing building that's been around for a long, you know, a long time. We have a project that is attached to it that we view as being a financially viable project, and that really is going to be able to subsidize what's on the front there, is how we expect to be able to do it. So I, because the strength of the rest of the project, I think we can make these spaces very affordable, compared to what probably a new construction project would be able to offer somebody.
I also had a question about the outdoor space. I think there's been attempts to use that outdoor space previously, and with, I would say, limited success, and there's maintenance issues. I know it's like a vortex for every leaf in that neighborhood in the fall. Any thoughts on how that's going to be maintained and who's responsible?
So there will be fencing and things like that around it, which would probably keep some of that away, but again, even just more use of an area like that, what leads to that kind of stuff happening the most is that an area's not getting used. When it's not getting used, things accumulate there, because nobody cares. I mean, it's not getting used. So this being an activated space, there will be many people that have a vested interest in it being a nice, presentable space. If the businesses there are utilizing it, especially if you have a coffee shop, maybe one of the other spaces is a small restaurant as well, they're going to use that space, and I'm confident they'll keep it looking nice.
Any other questions for the developer?
How many, how many stores did you say you could fit in? Because I can see here in the renders that are like two, maybe three, with one more on the right, and then the rest is going to be the storage. Is that right?
Were you asking about the number of storefronts?
Yes.
Yeah, and this is just a, this is just a rendering with a mock-up. So what we showed on here, there's just the two signs shown. I think it could be divided up into probably three to four spaces, depending on the demand and the size that they want. That's just what we showed in this picture specifically. So the front of the building there, I wish, I don't have the overhead map to share, but the front of the building there is where we plan to put the retail spaces, and then back behind it, in the rest of the building, is where we plan to put storage. And then there will be, excuse me, rear access on the building for storage. That'd be the primary access for the storage. The storage just needs a front entrance, there would be just like a double doors or something. It does, all it needs is a walk-in entrance on the front. It doesn't need like a big retail space of any kind on the front.
Right, I understand what you're saying, but here in the rendering, like you have, it's like mainly, most of, more than half of the front of the building is utilized for the storage, if you count the open entrance and then the entrance for the storage, and then you have two stores, and then one empty space on the right that doesn't have a sign, so I assume that's, that could be a third one. Okay.
I just want to remind the commission, too, tonight, you guys are considering amending the text to allow this kind of use, and then the Board of Adjustment would actually examine their, the specific application for their specific use.
Yeah, and that's another one, another concern that I have, because if we allow this change, it will affect all CC2 zones, and then another developer could come and not have an idea, like this is a great idea, putting storage on the front, you know, small stores on the front, but what would happen if another developer comes, and they don't want to do that, and then they just want to have like storage, completely storage? Can they do that?
Let's, let's go back to the specific approval criteria that are shown on the slide here. They could not do that. So the text amendment would only allow self-storage uses in the CC2 zone through special exception, and these, again, are the specific criteria that those uses would be reviewed by, and one is that a substantial portion of the front building facade must accommodate other allowable commercial uses, and that the self-storage use is not allowed within the first 30 feet of the building facade, and the entrance to the self-storage use on the front of the building can only occupy 30% of the front of that building facade.
Okay, but then, for example, I think that's great, 30%, I like it, but then all this open space is not part of that 30%, right? Do you see, like in the render? Let's say if they wanted to do this, right, this entrance would be the 30%, and then all this other open space is not part of the 30%, and then you have like, let's say, 20% for that open space, or other 30%, and you have the stores, that would be like maybe a 40% of the total of the front.
The stores would... The stores would need to be the stores, or in this case, what they're proposing is that outdoor cafe area would be 70% of the facade.
Okay.
So I think what maybe makes it a little deceiving here are the signs. So you see store local, that's not going to be the, the full size of the entrance to the self-storage unit. And all of that would be evaluated at the time of the special exception. We would need plans showing the other retail spaces and the specific square footage and that detail to ensure that the entrance to the self-storage unit is not more than 30% of the width of the facade.
Okay. Thanks, Man.
Maria, would you pull your microphone down towards you a little bit, if you would? Make sure we hear you. Any other questions for the developer? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
I'd like to invite any members of the public who came to talk on this subject to step up to the podium, say your name and your address, and limit your, you'll limit your comments to five minutes or less, if you would, please.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Angie Jordan. My address is 1125 Apple Court in Iowa City in the South District. I am wearing my resident hat. I am not representing any organization tonight. And as a resident, I just want to say how excited I am about this proposal. I'm also extremely excited in how it was collaboratively reached. I'm excited about the prospects of this long-term opportunity to invest in inclusivity around entrepreneurs, business engagement, neighborhood revitalization. I'm super excited. I, too, have concerns, I have questions, I have more ideas. One of them is exactly what Commissioner Sines talked about, is ensuring or figuring out affordability. And as I learn more about commissions and the work and all the process and approval, I'm excited to get more discussion around this through the Good Neighbor procedure that the city does to bring more residents into this meeting, so it's not just Angie Jordan at this meeting, because our residents have some really great ideas, some curiosity and concerns that I think can continue to inform South Gate. But I just want to just express that excitement that this collaborative approach for existing commercial property, taking into account what we've been trying to do in that neighborhood grassroots level, I think we need more of. And yeah, I just want to, want to, I want to also always invite our South Gate folks to our neighborhood meetings, and then again, trying to fill up these chairs here with our residents so we can have more resident input and feedback. So just want to say thank you for the time and excited, excited, excited.
All right, thank you, Angie. Anyone else from the public here to talk about, address the commission?
I have one question about it. So just looking at the, this rendering, the very, the very far right-
I'm sorry, could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Robert Domsek, 860 Macalester Court. And this is just a quick question. The, the building on the far, far right is the United States Postal Service, right? And so I'm wondering, does this particular plan include that part of the facade for the U.S. Postal Service, or does it exclude that? And is there-
It excludes it.
Okay. And so there, so there is no impact then with the post office?
This is, I don't mean to, this is really more of a chance for you to speak to the commission as opposed to ask a lot of questions, unfortunately.
Okay, that's fine.
But I think we got the answer.
Well, I, the reason I ask is because it sounded like when one of the members was speaking, they said the building with no, no sign on it, which made it seem like it was actually part of this. And I'm clarifying that it's whether or not it is.
No, I didn't mean the post office. I meant like in the little, little stores, this is so light that you cannot see it very well, but on the stores, there is like a coffee, coffee bags, and then another, another sign, and then there is like a space that, which is part of this building, it doesn't have a sign. So I assume that that could be one-third store, but I wasn't talking about the post office.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to speak to the commission on this topic? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I entertain a motion for us to move to discussion.
Move approval.
Second.
Provable by Nolte, second by Townsend. All right, I'll go ahead. I want to start by saying I am a resident of the South District. I am fairly involved in the South District Association. I have not had any conversations with anyone about this project, so I just want to make that clear as we go into it. I have opinions, but I have not conversations.
Well, I, I think this is a creative use. I've been trying to help a friend who wants to open a restaurant in that area, and it's tough to find affordable, smaller spaces that will allow that type of use. So I think there'll be a lot of demand for this. And I trust, I trust the language created by staff around the special exemption. I'm not, I don't worry that these are going to pop up all over. I think there's good criteria for when and how they can be designed. So I'm, I'm supportive of the language in this project.
And it's one of the few places in town where there is parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a little concerned when I read Megan, Megan's email, but I really like the idea of having stores in the front and then the storage in the back. And I also think that 30%, 30-70 is a good balance to have like little shops in the front. I really like that. And what the developer was saying about having a difficulty finding shops that want to rent something that is so, so deep is true. I mean, like, I couldn't imagine what kind of shop would want to divide that and have such a long retail space. So I think this is the best solution.
Yeah, and there are so many places around Iowa City and Corvile that are open now, retail spaces. It's good to see that there's something maybe that you won't know if it's going to work unless you try. So.
I did, I did read the letter that we got today also, and, and I understand the concerns of the letter writer, and the gist of it being the area is changing. And I, and I think that's true, and I'm not sure there's anything stop, going to stop that movement. I mean, obviously, bricks and mortar retailers are on the way out in many cases. Small, local businesses are always hungry, looking for space to, to start, try a startup. This particular, the other thing about this part of this building is it sets back quite a ways from the, from the highway, which is, which was commented about, the landscape along the highway is changing, and that is accurate. This particular piece is kind of significantly set back from, from that area. I, you know, I think any opportunity to use a space, to increase the tax space of otherwise empty space, there are a lot of empty spaces around on the south side. This one, without a plan like this, this one would sit empty. At, at the mall, there's a lot of empty spaces.
Exactly.
So I'm, I'm supportive of, of the project also, of the, of this, of the change on the zoning. Okay, any further discussion? Go for a vote? Do you want to do a roll call, Ann?
Sure. I'm used to that. Craig?
I know.
Is absent. Hench absent. Martin absent. Nolte?
Aye.
Padron?
Yes.
Sines?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Very good. Motion, motion to recommend approval passes. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number five, case number CPA 21-0001. I request to set a public hearing for August 19th, 2021 on a proposed amendment to the South District Plan. Ann?
Tonight, staff is just requesting that the commission set the public hearing. I don't have a presentation for this item.
That's fine. Just need a motion to approve, to set the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So moved?
Second.
All right, commission members, you want to, Ann, roll call?
Hench absent. Martin absent. Nolte?
Aye.
Padron?
Yes.
Sines?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Craig is also absent.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, discussion of the proposed South District Plan Amendment, CPA 21-0001, and the draft of the Form-Based Zones and Standards, REZ 21-0005. Who's got this?
This is a continuation of the discussion that the commission has had at the previous two commission meetings regarding the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, the South District Plan, and the proposed Form-Based Code. I, I don't really have a presentation prepared for this item either. It's really an opportunity for the commission to ask questions, bring up items that they'd like the staff to look into and present at the, the hearing on the 19th. In terms of our plans for the August 19th meeting, staff will be preparing a comprehensive memo going over the Form-Based Code. It'll be kind of the written version of Kirk's oral presentations. So that will be included in your agenda packet for the 19th. We will also go over all of the comments that we've received to date. Some of those were included in this agenda packet for tonight, and there will be more that will be included in the August 19th agenda packet. We will be presenting on the plan amendment and the Form-Based Code. Those will be briefer presentations than what the commission has received at the previous two meetings. And we will obviously hold the public hearing, which you just set. And at that meeting, staff is recommending that the commission make a recommendation to council. But tonight, it's really for you to discuss amongst yourself, ask questions, how we can, I have some, if you want me to bring up maps, or if there's anything that you would like me to bring up, I could do that as well.
I, I think there were a few questions or requests for some information from the last time, and I wasn't able to print the minutes this evening, so I don't have those. Do you happen to have notes on that?
Yeah.
One of them was my question about the public transit issues with the transit changes. And you did supply, you did supply the commission with information on this, on the change, upcoming changes and that, and I appreciate that.
Yes, in the, for your questions on the transit?
Maybe I just had a comment on the transit, but.
Yeah, we have, there were some, several questions that came up, and we addressed those in the, the memos to the commission, but we haven't discussed those. So if you would like to go back to the transit question, we can do that. That, let me, let me find it here.
I think I, I believe I just more made a comment that there were some upcoming transit, transit changes happening, and my impression was that there were some routes being curtailed and possibly, you know, the, the South District Zone, assuming to some degree that there's public transportation available, and was the city going to be able to handle that and, accommodate that need?
Yeah. So I can speak, I can speak to that briefly, if you like. Staff believes that through the proposed plan amendment and the changes to the code that we will, we have, we will have regulations that will create an incentive for transit to provide service in this area. The development is going to be more compact, there's going to be more residents, there will be a need for transit. And we think based on how it's being proposed to be developed, that the city could serve this area with transit more easily than some of the more suburban-type development that you see it currently at the fringes of the community. There is a proposed extension to the Gilbert Line, which will now serve Terry Trueblood, which is just to the west of the proposed planning area.
Okay. Any questions about that? I believe I also had a question or asked for some, some information. We've heard a lot about form versus use. And I was hoping to get a little clarification on that and what that, what that means in practicality.
So the code actually regulates both form and use. But the, this is kind of a new way of approaching zoning from our conventional zoning code, which is a use-based code. The purpose of this code is to really focus on the physical form of the buildings, but allow different types of uses, both residential and non-residential, in, in those building types in areas that are appropriate. So for the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, the areas that would allow commercial uses are the open zones, and these are located in the, the walkable neighborhood nodes. And you can see it up here, west of, can you guys see my cursor?
No.
So west of Wetherby Park, you kind of see that the open zone, which is identified, it's not a solid color, it's kind of a diagonal line. So there's an open zone west of Wetherby Park, which would allow non-residential uses. But the areas around that, the pink area and the purple area to the south would only allow residential uses. The, the Main Street Zone also allows some commercials, commercial uses, which is at Sycamore and Macalester. There's a Main Street, or there's an open zone down off of Soccer Park Road. And then, I actually can't. There we go. There's an open zone near South Gilbert, just north of Sycamore Street, kind of on the southwest corner. So the, the focus of this code is more form-based, but it also does regulate uses. The, the proposed code also incorporates a new use, which is live-work uses. So there's some T4 zone areas that would allow live-work uses, but the code has proposed specific standards that only allow certain types of uses in those, in those zones.
So in, in a residential zone, if someone were to build a, you know, a, a single-family structure or a duplex or something, could they open a dentist shop or an attorney, a lawyer?
If it was in an open zone.
If it was in an open zone, okay.
Yeah.
That helps. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a comment, a question. So I don't know if you remember last time when we were talking about parking, you said that we're reducing or, I can't remember the name of the person that was presenting, was it Kirk?
Kirk, yeah.
Kirk was saying that the code proposes a reduction of the minimum requirement for parking, right? Depending on the, on the zone and the use. So let's say if right now, I'm, I'm just going to say a number two, throw an example, but if a townhouse has a minimum of two parking spaces, we're going to reduce it to one or something like that. But my concern is that if the idea is to reduce the parking spaces, reducing the minimum requirement is not going to be, is not going to reduce the number of parking, because the number of parking spaces is still going to be mandated or dictated by the, dictate by the market, what the market needs are, right? So if a developer comes and they still think that the, the number of parking that we need for this specific building is still the number that we're asking for in other zones, they're not going to put the minimum. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Is, is your concern that they're going to provide more than the minimum?
Right. So because it's going to be what the market is asking for. So I was wondering what would happen if, instead of reducing the minimum, what would happen if we put a cap on the maximum number of, of parking spaces? Because I think that would be more restrictive instead of reducing the minimum.
That, yeah, I understand, I understand your point. The only zone that has a max is the T4 Main Street Zone, so that area in the center of the community. But you're right, the rest of the zones have a minimum, so they could provide more.
Mm-hmm.
But why would there be a problem?
Well, the, I think Kirk was like presenting, when he made the presentation, he was trying to convey the idea that they wanted to have less parking spaces in this whole new area. And I think that reducing the minimum parking is not going to meet the goal. Do you understand? Like, if the city, if that's what the city wants, I think maybe putting a cap on the maximum would be better than reducing the minimum.
Except I think we're, we're seeing that more people have more vehicles, so you're going to need more parking space.
Well, they want to get away from that.
Yeah.
But they're not. But they're not.
I know. And then we get to the transportation topic issue that is the same. I mean, if you want people to use less cars, are we providing transportation?
Exactly.
Are we providing bike, bike lanes, or, or safe sidewalks so people can walk, right? We have to, we still have to go to places. So if the city.
Even on Sundays.
Right, right.
There's no service.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I share your concerns. Really, I have, for my entire tenure, I think, talked, spoke a little bit against reducing parking. I feel like the parking reduction is, falls under the category, if they don't build it, they won't come. And I don't think that's true. I mean, I think the reality is, we live in a mobile, a mobile country, a mobile state, a mobile city. I see bike lanes going unused throughout the community, and I'm probably going to get, get a lot of comments about that statement.
But they're not.
I see bike lanes not being used. I see neighborhoods where we have reduced the parking, just bumper-to-bumper cars in the streets. And so people, and a lot of those are in the near downtown areas, so it makes it hard for people coming in the near downtown to access, you know, downtown. That's just my two cents worth on that. I, I, I get the, I understand the desire. I understand the desire. I just don't personally know how practical it is. I do like, I mean, I, I, I love the concept of, of the mixed, missing middle and the mixed neighborhoods. I, I lived in the Sherman Hill area of Des Moines for a while, and if you're familiar with that, it's a, it's an old neighborhood, just to the west of downtown. It was where all the rich people lived back in the 1800s. And it was, it's, it was a mixed-use development. You know, you had the corner grocery store. You had, there was, I think, actually, there was a fire station in the middle of the block that turned into some other business at some point. And, and you had, you had fourplexes and duplexes sitting next to big Victorian homes, and it was a delightful neighborhood. And it was very, and it was very walkable. And I think a lot of people who lived in that neighborhood chose that neighborhood because it was, it had that character. I, I don't believe, I, I know that's why people who, I mean, those houses had a premium price, you know, way back, way back in the day. So I, I love the concept of the, of the missing middle. I'm, I, I don't know that we, I don't know that this plan 100%.
Addresses that.
Addresses that. But I'm open to, I'm open to further discussion on it. I, I'm not sure there's a better plan. I mean, I guess this is probably a step in the right direction maybe, but I, I am concerned that I'm not sure it fully takes on the, the heart and soul of that concept. Any other questions?
I've still got, I'm still hung up on the affordable housing and the fair market rate and the, what is it, the area median income. And, I mean, there's just so much that they're basing it on, and none of it's making much, much sense as to what's actually affordable. So I, I think we need to address that whole, that whole segment of what is affordable housing, and how can we make things more affordable? And when we throw out that jargon, what does it actually mean? You know, what are we talking about? Because, you know, we say that, and it, we know it's not affordable. Those people that really need a home can't afford most of the stuff in Iowa City.
Yeah, and I, I'll comment if I could. Having been involved in, in the Affordable Housing Coalition for a number of years, I think the, one of the things that happens is affordable versus more affordable. And I think what a mixed, a mixed neighborhood provides is potentially more affordable units, in that, you know, you can, you have a lot that you now can put two or four units on, as opposed to just one house, which lowers, significantly lowers the development cost of each unit. And from, from the affordable housing standpoint, then the perspective is, is as, as units like that become available at a more affordable price than what's currently available, you, you typically will have people who are living in lower-priced homes moving into that level of home where they can't afford to right now. And that opens up, that opens up some of the lower-priced housing stock in the community.
Exactly.
When you talk about true affordable housing, when, you know, when the cities and counties and that talk about true affordable housing, they're looking at people who make 80%, 60%, 30% of, of the area median income. Those are, those are typically projects that cannot, from my experience, you can't build those
Yeah.
in this day and age unless you have significant subsidies
Yep.
and/or external input. And we do see, we do see those projects in town, fortunately, because we have groups in town that are getting Lytech funds and, and things like that to, to do it. But it is, it is impossible in this day and age to, for a developer to build a unit that is totally affordable on their own.
Sure.
And that's the challenge.
Except, except when we, when they ask, when they say they're going to have, build affordable housing, they get perks. So they get to build additional heights, which gives them additional units, which means they're making more money off the expensive units. So why couldn't they have two or three or four units in that complex that are actually affordable? They wouldn't be losing any money. They'd still be getting, getting good, good money for the rest of the units.
And this proposed code change doesn't have any built-in affordable percentage requirement, like, like the Riverfront Crossing District does?
No, there's just the regulatory incentives.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I, and I guess my thought would be, there's honestly not a lot of opportunity in this, in, in this zone for what I would call larger-scale buildings that had multiple, where you could say, we want you to, we want you to build 10% of your units, maintain them as affordable, because I'm not sure there's going to, I'm not sure there's going to be any buildings in this area that are more than eight or 10 units, probably.
About 50% of the land area is in the county, though, so development in that area would be subject to the annexation policy.
So a lot of it is still in the county?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the affordable housing annexation policy would apply in those areas.
Would come into play. Excellent. I like hearing that. Any other questions or comments?
I like the plan overall, and I think it comes, I think staff has done a great job of taking comments and tweaking it. The, to me, it comes down, every, every project's going to be different, and we have to look at every block. So I, I think comprehensively, this is a good plan, but the proof will be in the pudding when people start wanting to build, and that's.
And I, I guess my other concern is, when it comes, when those come into us, and they say, okay, it's for this zoning code, how do we know if they're making exceptions to that? Will the exceptions be presented with that plan?
So the first step would be, if this code is adopted and the plan amendment is approved, if a developer wants to come in, it would be a rezoning process?
Okay.
So it would come before your commission, and the draft code includes specific review criteria for rezonings that we will be using to analyze that rezoning. And so staff would be using those criteria. So that would be all written in your staff report. So if there's anything that's different from what's in the plan, it would be noted in the staff report.
Another thing that I was really pleased to see in, in the staff's recommended plan changes, early on in the process, when they had the consultant, the Opticos group here, and they did, they did a number of community information gathering sessions with, with the neighbors in that area, and I attended, I think, every one of them. And some of the, some of the concepts that Opticos had, and, and their version of the missing middle had, involved a lot of additional amenities in both the, the house, on the house's structure, and in the street front edge, and in the streets, and alleyways and whatnot. And, you know, and, and all the developers at that time pointed out that all those things have a significant price tag attached to them, which makes it very, even harder to be affordable. And I would say that, as I read through, you know, the, the staff's draft of this, I think they've done a pretty good job of not putting a lot of frilly extras that, that they're going to, that would increase the price of these homes just artificially. So I do appreciate that. I think the, I think they heard the, the developer and builder concerns, and some of the community concerns, and have come up with a plan that hopefully will get us some more mixed, interesting mixed neighborhoods, and yet still be somewhat affordable.
Somewhat affordable.
Any other questions or comments? We don't have, need any action on this tonight? Okay?
No.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much.
You've got lots of questions.
Pardon?
She got lots of questions.
Yes, she did.
And if there are more questions that the commission has that you want answered on the 19th, just shoot me an email, and we can prepare something.
Awesome. Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, consideration of meeting minutes from July 15th. Did anyone have a chance to review those, wouldn't find any comments to, changes need to be made?
I read through them.
I entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? First by Townsend, second by Nolte. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Eight, item number eight, planning and zoning information. Anne?
I have a few updates. First, the commission's probably already aware of this, but the proposed Hickory Trail Estates rezoning near Hickory Hill Park failed at council. So that will not be moving forward. I had sent out an email earlier this week about moving our commission meetings to Wednesday. I've heard back from most of you, thank you. If you haven't sent me an email, please do when you have a chance. And lastly, I just wanted to note that today, the, all city employees received an email, and I believe a press release went out too, that the, the city's mask mandate for city facilities is going to take effect tomorrow. So starting tomorrow in all city buildings, masks will be required. So that will affect our meeting on the 19th. I think we'll try to figure out spacing if people want to remove their masks or something like that. I'll probably have more information for everyone.
But are we still meeting in person?
It will be here, yes, in this, in this building here for the 19th. So we can maybe spread out a little bit more if you want to remove your mask or keep your mask on. We'll have to figure that out.
I want to know who snuck in and took our time spot in the, in the council chamber. I did, I will share, I, I sent an email to the chair and to staff the other day expressing some concerns about the city council's disapproval of the Hickory Hill project, which, which went against the, the commission's recommendation. And this is, this has happened a couple other times in recent history, and we've been called in for consults on some of them. But some of the comments that were made by council members concerned me, in, in that how they were interpreting, you know, the two-decade-old neighborhood plan, how they were interpreting the comprehensive plan. Some of them were interpreting it very literally. And I, and I, I, I think as a commission, we need to maybe have a conversation about, does that affect how we interpret these plans and these, these codes and these rules as we are making our decision making? Because we spent a lot of time, we spent three meetings on that, and the developer, you know, spent a lot of time trying to get closer and closer and closer to the plan, and yet ultimately, it wasn't, it wasn't approved. And there were some very specific reasons why. And I, I'm just a little concerned as to, are we on the same page, as to how we're evaluating and?
Well, I was at that meeting, and it almost seemed as if a couple of the council members were biased towards, it wasn't about their actual, I mean, there, there seemed to be some bias against the project. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I share your concerns. When I heard they were going back to that discussion about cul-de-sacs and through, we went, we spent hours on that. We
Yeah.
we crossed that bridge.
Yeah, and we had staff telling us that that wasn't the modern way to do things.
Yep.
You know? So I don't know, I, I just throw that out there. Is that a discussion that we want to have at a future date? Do we need clarification, do we need clarification from council as to how they want us to evaluate and, and review projects? I just, I just throw that out there. I was, I was quite concerned by the, by it.
When was the council meeting? I'll watch it. I haven't seen it.
It was the last, um.
Last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday.
Okay.
So that'd been the 29th?
Okay.
That sounds about right.
I mean, for what it's worth, I would say you guys did your job, and staff did its job. That's sort of the nature of the process, that council is, they hear what you say, and then they, they are the independent decision makers. So.
Correct.
Yeah, this is just, you know, we have to keep in mind that this is only a recommendation.
Right. So as frustrating as it is, I think everybody gave it good attention. I think you are a well-trained, knowledgeable organization.
When we vote against something, and they vote for something, they call us in and put us on the front street and ask us why. They did not do that this time.
Well, there was the consult, right, at the initial, before they took first consideration, the consult. So, I mean, that's how the process is designed to work.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right.
A second.
By Townsend, second by Padron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for being gentle on me tonight.